4:00 PM will open the regular meeting for August 25th, 2015 with the call to order and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments? Yes, please stand and give your name, please.
Okay, can I just sit here?
Sure.
Okay. More comfortable for me here. For longer than is always thank you. I have two items, one to just bring up to the council. One of them was, a couple of months ago, I approached you folks about the community pride projects that you're involved in, and I think you're a manager, I think you're the president, the director of the local committee, or whatever. I've got that in the paper right here.
The downtown community, that's what you're talking about, okay, yes.
Right. And the thing I mentioned to you folks was the condition of your curb in front of City Hall and the deteriorating condition of that sidewalk. And it just doesn't, you know, I mean, I think you folks need to step forward and say, hey, we're going to move ahead with this effort and get those things fixed before some...
We are going to get that fixed. I think Mary has it budgeted for this summer.
It's budgeted and it's very defixed this before, you know, this fall.
This fall.
Before the fall.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you very much. I think that's really needed, and I want to show people that you're really interested in picking up the town.
Yes, yes, it's very needed.
Okay, the other thing is just, you might find this is petty, but it's really not petty to me and some other people here in town. Okay, what happened here in front of me is the Lake County Police, the Lakeview Police Department report.
Uh-huh.
This is for last month.
Yes.
Not the latest one. But I've been here at least for two meetings or whatever, and as far as I know, Chief Kemp is still on medical leave.
That's correct.
Right, okay. But every, at the bottom of the, of the bottom of the report...
It's his name.
It says Chief Jeff Kemp, which implies to me that he's preparing this report, and I think if he's not preparing this report, it should be signed by Acting, Mr. Gray.
Acting.
Acting Chief. This implies that he's preparing this report, and I don't think that's correct. I think that needs to be shown that we still have an acting there. Okay?
Yes.
And I think that's, you know, every place, every public place that I've worked at, when then, when someone signed for someone else, prepared another report or whatever, they show acting to show that that person is responsible for that document and not the, the person who's ill or on angina leave or on prior assignment or whatever. So I think we need to be clear with, to show that even though it says, you're still acting, it shows to me that the chief is, is signing, is preparing this report. Okay. The other item I have in the regard for this also, and your Amy just a question, I'd like to come into your office, or this office here, and take a look at the union contract for law enforcement, and if you could, you know, I don't know if you can do me, tell me now or give me a call, tell me that I can come in and...
Okay, I'll look into that and get ahold of you. If you just leave your number with me before, after the meeting, I'll get ahold of you.
Okay, I'll leave it at the front desk.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Mike Patrick, 161 Southeast Street. I noticed on your agenda, on old business, that you're going to discuss trees or something, Lou Creel about trees, and I just wanted to add in there that I've been doing research on trees myself, and I'd like to leave this copy with Mr. Sims. It's a tree that's called a hackberry tree, and...
A what? Hackberry?
A hackberry tree, and they're recommended for meridians and, what was the other word? For, for street landscapes and meridians. Anyway, they're a big beautiful tree. If you'd like to maybe look at one if you're considering it or something, there's one in my front yard. It went from a one-inch sapling to an eight-inch trunk, 25 feet tall, in 15 years. So, you know, and not only that, the tree is very easily shaped round, so you can keep it to the narrow, whatever that's called, diameter, or something. Anyway, on that, and it does grow, 25 to 60 feet tall, but anyway, I just, I don't know what you're going to do. I know there was some discussion about the trees that Mr. Creel wanted to put in, and I just wanted to offer this as a suggestion. That's...
That's a good idea. Thank you. Anyone else with public comment? All right, we have communications comments, informational items. One correctional facility will be having an open house for their 10-year anniversary, which, pardon me?
It's on A Street.
Yeah. But if you are in there and are going, you need to let them know before the end of this month, so do that. It should be very interesting. I'm going to plan to go. Any other questions or comments on that? Department reports. We have police report for July, and 911, was that up with you? Any additions or comments?
Just moping along with our CAD system. Everything's going well.
Well, you did, well, it's the fire department, so we'll move on to Dennis with the fire department. An open house you had?
Yeah, the open house turned out pretty, pretty well. Looks like it'll be sparer next year, but we have quite a few people for it, I guess.
Well, that's good. I think it's a good idea to do it every year.
It's a little late in the year this year. I think next year we'll do it more in the early spring or something like that, where we can have some other departments down there also.
Can I go back?
Well, I guess so.
Actually, for our new telephone system and mapping system, we're scheduled for a visit, onsite visit Veterans Day, but they changed it. So November and then installation of our new telephone mapping system will be slated for April.
April.
Right, April. The cost is usually, last year was about $300,000 for the new telephone system, which is paid by the use of yourself, your telephones, telephone maps. So it's, every five years they replace it, because they sit there for 24/7, 365/3 year, 366. So it's time to be replaced.
Okay, thank you Scott. Anderson in the hearing, we have a report, everyone here. How the works, round book is required. Managers report, Ray, do you have anything else to add?
Hello, Raymond? No, nothing to...
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the consent calendar. We have a regular session minutes for July 28th, 2015. Any questions, questions or comments on that?
I have a small correction. I, under public comment, E. Benson spoke, Sandra Wenzel being a great candidate for the mayor position. I listened to the recording, but what she stated is she would like to see Sandra Wenzel run for mayor.
Oh.
So I think that's maybe a little bit more...
A little bit.
...than what you'd be establishing.
Okay. Okay, any other corrections or comments? We have a motion to approve with corrections.
I'll make a motion, we approve it. Minute says corrected.
Well, second, too.
We have a motion and a second to approve minute says corrected. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. Mayor Council, updates. I did attend a meeting on Saturday market, and I've met with Ray just a few times to be caught up on what's going on within the town, since I'm in a new position. Sarah?
Not since last week. All I've done is travel back and forth through Reno and get my girl in school, and I'm relatively teenage free.
Feels kind of scary, thank you. Michael?
No, I have nothing to report. Got it, man.
Okay. Old business, we have Lou Creel and trees. She wanted to plant trees over, and we were...
She did. Lou had some rather large trees that she wanted to plant out at the meeting strip at her place. I met with her and she, she did, actually, she already has planted some trees, but they're small trees. They're dwarf, one, a dwarf maple and a couple of dwarf fruit trees instead of the 25, 50-foot canopy, two-foot trunks. Anyway, I talked with her and then I talked with bloomers, as whom she was buying, buying trees from. I talked to them about the type of trees that were appropriate for planter strips and, and I thought she was going to come back and talk with me about what she wanted to plant. Next thing I knew, they were planted. So, so the trees are already there, but they are, they really are small ornamental type of trees that were planted in planter strips. So that's kind of where that is.
So we don't need any further action on that? Okay. New business, we have Sandra Wenzel resignation letter from the council. We need to approve that and declare vacancy for that position on the council.
Can we do that in one motion?
I would no...
I move that we accept Sandra Wendle, Wenzel's not approved, but accept resignation letter and declare a council member vacancy at this time.
Is there a second?
I'll second, too.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resignation letter of Sandra Wenzel, declare vacancy, and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Second, well, third item actually is Michael Hughes resignation letter. I don't know if everyone knows yet, but Michael is moving over to Brookings, the end of this week or very soon, so he is resigning from his position on the council. So we have a letter of resignation, which would be effective August 31st, 2015.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Michael Hughes and also to declare that council member position effective August 31st.
August 31st.
Okay, we have a res... (laughing) I kept when you say resignation. We have a motion and to accept Michael Hughes' letter of resignation and declare vacancy as of August 31st. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have Mr. Will Kate go to discuss a school zone, reclosure, I believe?
Any others? I just hear a situation about handouts. Scary part is my English teacher is here. I may get a bad answer.
I'll take out a pen and here for you.
Thank you. Back about March or April, a concerned parent and a concerned school board member came together and brought to our awareness situations that bothered them as far as our traffic safety patterns down around Fremont, Hay, and also Lakeview High School. One of the issues with Fremont, Hay, I'm out there on bus duty, or was out on bus duty day after day after day, and my big concern was I would see cars coming down the street in an, in an east to west pattern. They would let, they would stop in the middle of the street, let their little children out, and run across the street in traffic to go to the curb of Fremont School. And time and time again, I would get out there and say, please, you know, please take the traffic pattern of heading south down I Street, going around on Fifth Street, and heading east on Fifth Street, and drop them off at the curb. You know, I could repeat that over and over and over again, but we'd still, on a daily basis, have parents dropping their children off on Fifth and running across that street. But I'd just see it as potential for trouble, you know, one day down the road. The one thing that we decided in the traffic safety meeting, this was my proposal, we currently have the I Street portion of the Hay, Fremont Hay complex closed off, thanks to the town council approving that and everything else, some years before I became Lady Hay, so we can do bus loading and unloading and make that a safety corridor between Fremont and Hay. We don't have, you know, there's so many students and so much activity across that crosswalk every day, you know, it keeps from, you know, having a child hit in that crosswalk between those two buildings. And also, it's developed a very nice safety zone for bus loading and unloading. So what I'm proposing is this, on Fifth Street, Fifth and H, you know, we develop some sort of soft horses like we have already, or sandwich board or something, declaring that a one-way street, Fifth Street during school hours.
So you'd go which direction?
They would go on the traffic pattern of going south down I Street and around and heading east on Fifth Street. So we, we're going to pro-pivot west access on Fifth Street. And we keep them, you know, coming on that, you know, I Street slash Fifth Street pattern, they could drop their children off on the curb on the school grounds.
But they would, are they going up the, past Fremont?
Yeah, they will be...
Does it not cause, cause problems in that area then?
They will, yeah, what they'll do, they'll drop right off the curb on Fremont.
Okay.
Right on, on the curb on Fremont. I brought some Google Maps. First one, open court, it's a A here. This is a picture of I Street by Lady Hay, and those arrows that I drew on and pan, those are the arrows that, that I want the traffic to head down, head south. Our proposal on the, I don't know if you can, how, you know, legible it is, but if you see on the left side of I Street, that's where our buses load and unload each day. My proposal, and this is on us, my proposal is, we're going to route a lot of our staff parking on that west side of I Street and remove a lot of congestion off H and, excuse me, I and, and Fifth. So that's one thing we're going to do to add to the safety plan as far as removing some congestion on Fifth Street and I Street. Another thing the Safety Committee really want us to do, and this is on us, is develop some visitor parking in front of our school buildings. And that will enable some parking in front of Hay. And Fremont currently is not that bad. Fremont's in pretty good shape as far as parking in front. There's always a lot, a lot of accessible parking for parents or visitors to come up and park in front of Fremont. The next page shows a picture of Fremont. Here's Fremont, here's Hay, here's the route I wanted to take, heading south, rounding the corner, either dropping their children, children off at the curb of Lady Hay or on this long stretch of sidewalk on the north side of Fremont. The next page...
So basically, excuse me, Will...
Go ahead.
So anybody going this way, then on Fifth, they can't do that.
They really can't do that because...
This would almost becomes a one-way street to, during school drop-off, because there's no place to go once they get down here at this next intersection.
Right, because we have barricades up on I, so it's barricaded off.
And you're wanting this one way, so...
Yeah, just that second, Fifth Street, that's it.
This, in fact, makes this one way in...
Well, yeah, long for short, Lou, that does, yeah. So, anyway, so I'm moving there.
It's going to press heat up all the way.
But anyway, we had them off of Fifth, you know, we don't need to worry about I.
Yeah.
So, so the pattern, you see my pattern, and then, you know, down here in the corner, it's a little difficult to see. I proposed a one-way sandwich board at this location to denote that it is a one-way street during school hours, so...
Will, you, your staff, somebody takes care of the barricades that are currently used on, on I Street?
Yes, the custodial.
Or will you guys take care of this as well?
Exactly, yeah, we'll have the custodial staff, but the same as the software signs on I Street, we'll have them do that sign, too.
Okay.
So, so that's the first proposal. What I'm asking from the town is, you know, permission to set Fifth Street as a one-way street with signage that we will provide at the end of that street, making it at a, you know, strictly east, or excuse me, a west to east access.
Fifth Street between the school and...
H and I.
H and I, right.
H and I, yeah.
Will picking up grandkids and seeing you out there, I know you know it very well, and it seems like a good plan to...
Well, I appreciate that. I'm just concerned about the safety of those kids, and that's, that's disturbed me for a long time, seeing them get out and...
It gets very congested down there in the mornings and...
Yeah. And if we can get rid of a lot of that, you know, faculty parking and put them down in I Street corner, quarter, I think that, that's going to help the situation, too, by more visibility on the streets, so.
Well, I had another request.
Yeah.
I was wondering if we should just vote on this one first and then...
If you, if you like, sure.
Can we vote on without talking to our public works people or...
You know, I did talk to Ron about it. He was okay with it, as long as he didn't have to move the signs out. Yeah, we'll have our, we'll try and get and see what happens to them.
I'll make a motion that we accept the plan for Lake County School District Number 7 to institute a one-way designation on Fifth Street as presented to the council.
And I?
Between H and I.
And I, and well, okay, in the, in the...
Yeah, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, too.
Okay, we have a motion, as seen by Mr. Har, and second, so all in favor? All in, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
But I, I am sure that if you find this is not working smoothly, you're going to say...
Exactly, exactly. I'm going to say that we're not, we're not very good, we really want to drive it out.
It'll be confusing when the protocol starts, but I think people will adjust.
Yeah, you need to get time, but this gentleman over here to make sure that there's some information in the paper that will be put out.
We'll get word out on that.
Get that.
Well, number two on that, Fremont, Hay, that's on us, and I've already discussed that moving staff parking. Number three, I talked to Ray about this, this may be down the road, but I sure like to see the blinking, flashing lights as far as the school zone at Fremont on H Street, at Hay on I Street, and also as part of Lakeview High School plan, somewhere in the vicinity of Lakeview High School also. Same type of flashing lights you have down front of Head Start on the main drag. Now, right now, that was installed by ODOT, wasn't it?
I think that one was. When I, when I was at the meeting last week, it actually, earlier last summer or spring, I guess it was, with a meeting with Sean, we have the, the small cities lot with grant that's available to us that we used for M Street, we did North Second Street, and I have checked with them, and that, you know, putting safety, pedestrian and, and school bicycle safety sorts of things would be an eligible project. The cycle won't open up again until next year. We're finishing up the M Street now, and so we won't, we won't be able to apply again until the, it'll be June or July of 2016 will be the next period it'll come open, and so to install lights, it would, it would probably be two years from about now before we would be, the summer, at least two years now, work could be done. There is, there is a source of funds that could be used to do this, again, depending on what the total cost is. And of course, that would be a council decision to make the application to, to do that. There would be a match requirement that would need to be discussed at the time, once we know where it's, it's a 10% match.
Right. Capital per school, is that what you're...
I'm thinking one on I Street. I'm thinking one on H Street and one on Third Street. So, in the vicinity of Fremont, Hay, and Lakeview High School. You see a need for one in front of the other middle school?
Well, I'd like to go eventually all the way around the block, so...
You're perfect world, one in front of the other middle school, too.
And one in front of the gym, too, maybe? It's a parallel street, yeah.
Okay, we don't have anything on second.
If it's a perfect world.
So we'll think big.
That's exactly right.
Here's, you know, I saw some...
They're even expensive.
I saw some signals that were in the neighborhood of $7,000 or so...
A piece.
A piece. They were, they're solar operated. If you start after they install power, you know, we're at power level, I'm saying, because they probably, they're, they're solar, probably, systems with LED lighting and, and all that are pretty efficient. And, you know, price is coming down. If I get, like, a couple of years from now, it might be less. But if we're going to use, if we're going to do it and we need some grant money to help us do it, we're going to have, it isn't going to happen right now, so...
I'll get the district informed, too, and maybe we can do some in-kind support as well.
There's an awful lot of money right now, which is only going to be available, from what I've learned, for about another year, for solar energy projects. I don't know if it's a school kind of safety program that you would think it would be. And with that, there are two or three groups in the out of climate, Oregon Trust, Energy Trust, not out of climate, but Oregon Energy Trust or something like that. Places like that that have some money, we should look into those as well.
We can look into some of those. Those are generally to change out inefficients to efficient, those things.
Very good. DMS LHS, really, the only thing we're asking from the town of Lakeview is, I'm going to go to my handouts again. We're going to do a loading and unloading zone in front of Lakeview High School, so we're going to give out quite a few staff parking spots, so westbound traffic, drop their...
It would be on Third Street then?
On Third Street.
Yeah, right, for the school.
So on, you know, parents can drop, drop their students off at the curb of Lakeview High School. Currently, right now, we see, once again, it's stop in the middle road and let the kid out. It's horribly, horribly unsafe.
Yes.
So Mr. Prock, you know, he came forward with the idea of eliminating a lot of staff parking spots on the front, have, you know, cars pull in, drop them off, continue on. We want to do the same thing on the south side of Third Street, too, across Lakeview High School. What we're asking you is, is to extend, I don't know how many feet, how many feet was on that, that curb that day?
Probably 60 to 75 feet.
Okay. I think it was a few feet.
Is that in front of that, more or less, empty, derelict house?
Which part?
No, this is on Third Street.
This would be, be coming from Bob Gale's driveway up to the crosswalk.
Oh, I see, from on the other side.
Could be this one picture right there.
I see, I've, I've got it.
Okay. So my proposal is, oh, here it is, here's the best picture right here. My proposal is to fully extend that yellow portion of the curb all the way down to that driveway and make it closed parking during, once again, we're going to go back, think of school hours only, so the neighborhood can use the space, and let that be a loading and unloading zone for cars going from west to east. They can drop their students, pull in, drop their students off there, and have their students cross the crosswalk in front of Lakeview High School. And that's the other portion of this thing that I'm asking support from the town of Lakeview, is to extend the yellow portion of that curb.
I'll tell you what I love, I love about closing, I mean, if I were on staff, I'd probably be fussing with you, but on the other hand, after being on staff for a number of years, trying to back out of that when you're leaving at the end of the day...
Let it breathe it out every day.
Yeah, I mean, we, one year we made all the big rigs parked down here and all the little cars parked here, but you get between two others, you cannot see until you're way out in traffic.
Right.
That eliminates what I think is accidents are going to happen.
A real safety concern, yeah. So, as far as we're concerned, our responsibility is, is to paint our, do signage on our zone across the road, you know, in front of Lakeview High School. In addition to the yellow paint, we are probably asking of you to put a sign up, no parking from, you know, set hour to set hour.
School hours or something.
Yeah, if you're in school.
Something like that.
So, that's our request of you on that.
Just of interest, what are you going to do with those staff? Just of interest, what are you gonna do with the staff parking?
We lost about twelve spots. So, we're gonna just have to...
So, now you're gonna have to deal with seniors?
We're gonna have to deal with, uh, some student parking issues and, uh, I think the most underutilized part of our parking lot is the, over by the South Wing, uh, South Wing shop. There's some spots there that probably gonna be reserved for some staff.
Can they open something there on this side of Daly? That area there is...
That's, right now, it's kind of a, the basketball courts, is that what you're talking about?
The basketball courts on this side, but there is...
We have a lot of our students park on, currently park on Second Street. Uh, and we're gonna try to convince them to, to use Second Street more than they have. And even park on the, on the curb along the football field, on, along Second Street. There's a, there's, it's wide open. No students really take advantage of that right now. So, we're gonna try to...
You can't get to class in five minutes, in a minute or less if you park that far down.
Just try to get a little bit over, I guess.
Well, yeah, I'd rather have them do that. I'd rather have them hoof it than this, this staff.
With regards to this one, I do need to talk to Ron about, you know, I didn't ask him if he has any yellow crap on paint left. And then the other thing is, you know, there will be a, you know, no parking during school hours type of sign. I need to go there and I haven't asked him about that.
Doesn't the yellow just mean no parking though?
Well, the yellow would mean no parking, yeah. And I guess I think what they don't really want is they don't want it to be just no parking. They don't, because there's neighbors there.
Yeah, I understand.
That's why we need a signage over there.
On a gay night.
Yeah, it doesn't...
Yeah.
So, I'd like to say, we put the sign there and they can read the sign and say, oh, okay, we can park.
But yeah, I, I, I know that's another real congested area.
Yeah.
So, we need to, uh, wait until we talk to Ron about this?
It's a cost.
Painting the curb business, getting the sign up.
No problem with you changing your parking and things like that. You just need to figure out what's gonna cost you and how's who can get those signs.
Okay. Principals, do you have anything to add?
Who will be responsible for making the one-way sign or kind of the signage for the barricade? Are we just gonna block it off?
I think we can probably develop that. Unless, is that a town thing, you think? I have a sandwich board and I can probably get something together and find Kevin Sterba, who's on the traffic safety committee. He brought a catalog that has all this very, very signage. So, anyway, I can get in there and probably assign it quick. Probably less expensive than ODOT. Could be.
Yes, you can get the big printed one and then mount them on plywood or something like that. That's a lot cheaper than what the kind of signs we have to put up.
Right. So, anyway, that's on us. We can take care of that. Thank you.
Sure we have safety in mind, no doubt.
Well, it's, um, I think it was long overdue and it's a wonder all these many years, somebody hasn't been heard. Well, thank you, town council. I appreciate it. Appreciate your support. Thanks, David.
I, I do need, I guess, just some direction that Matt is with regards to, uh, process for filling vacancies. In the past, upon the council, in the past, what we've done is, uh, put a, put a notice in the paper. Of course, the press picks up on the, uh, vacancy. Most everybody's already aware that there, you know, either are or will be vacancies. And, and, uh, so I'll, I'll, I guess, without any other direction, I'll follow that process again of, of asking for people who are interested to submit their letters of interest, uh, for your consideration. You know, how you wanna approach that. At your next council meeting, you'll decide if you're going to do interviews or how you're going to go about making decisions. But I'll begin the process of letting people know.
I definitely think we need to do that because we will have to make decisions.
Interviews. If I had interviewed for, I had them, I would have thought about it seriously. Well, a lot of people not realize that when I did. And, and have spent a lot of time working out a list of every, you know, extra duty that you have. Because it's not just here for two hours, you know, or, you know, a month or something. It's town council, it's, uh, the prison, it's safety committees, it's planning, you know, commissions. It's, you know, a lot of other things that you'd run yourself ragged if you're Mike and Sandy and people like that. So, uh, you want somebody to have a real clear understanding of that before they start saying, oh, and here are your other assignments. And you're going, really? So, I think the interview process is a good way to go. And, uh, I wouldn't even object to asking Mike if he could sit in on those as well if he wanted to.
Well, I think you can decide.
I'm sure my husband would.
Process, but we need to get started finding those people.
My wife told me not to come to the meeting.
Well, I...
It's easier if you don't come.
Discuss that at our next meeting.
The problem is... There's...
There's three, three, and if we agree, that's four people. That's scary enough for most people.
I would, you know, if, I don't know, we'll talk about that, but I think with your expertise and some of the knowledge you have, you might be valuable to have there.
We'll, uh, we'll start letting people know that they can let us know they're interested by, you know, we do have a couple of letters. You're already aware of those.
Yeah.
A couple of others who may be, uh, they're just kind of waiting to know, uh, when the time is right to let us know they, uh, they are interested, if they still are.
So, hopefully we can get it in for next week's paper. Let people know to flock in here and let us know.
That's right.
Invaded by applications, I'm sure.
All right. Any other business here? All right.
I would like to say, thank, thank very much for the, for allowing me to be on the council. I've enjoyed it very much.
Well, thank you very much for being on. So, we've enjoyed helping you.
Enjoy the weekends. We'll be over to see you.
Please do. Bring a tent.
You'll have to send this off.
Doesn't have an extra square room anymore.
That's right.
Okay, with that concluded, we'll close our, uh, meeting at four thirty-eight.